And we will begin with the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's go take the roll.
Mr. Sextrow?
Here.
Ms. McDaniel?
Here.
Mr. Putoff?
Here.
Ms. Molly Robertson?
Here.
Mr. Patterson?
Here.
Mr. Burke?
Here.
We're all here in our places and the first order of business tonight is we have the proclamation for Mr. Pearlman, who has retired from the CIC. Around here, we have a proclamation of appreciation for you, for your many years of service to the CIC, and read as follows. I, Al Pearlman, who serve with dedication and distinction as a member of the Community Improvement Corporation of the Village of Evendale since 2011. Whereas Al Pearlman contributed in value, time, energy, and expertise to goals and missions of CIC by assisting in the design, planning, development of the Arrow Hub Advanced Manufacturing Innovation District, which currently includes Committee Vision, General Tool Corporation, and Mobile Shop. Whereas Al Pearlman was instrumental in creating the framework and execution of the many projects in the Village of Evendale, such as in purchasing underutilized properties for future development, or on Red Road, relocation of silco, fire, and security, and creation of the community reinvestment areas in the area. Arrow Hub was a vital role for the bridge to Al. Whereas Al Pearlman's leadership and support go beyond the Village of Evendale. He had practiced CPA for over forty years, a member of many professional committees, as well as serving on the committee, the Community Chest Committee, a board member of the treasurer of the Isaac M. Warren Temple, a board member in the Finance Committee, and a member of the Cincinnati Chapter of the Osher Life Home Learning Institute. And whereas Al Pearlman and his wife Barbara have been residents of the Village of Evendale for over twenty-one years, now therefore I would today try and bear the Village of Evendale due on behalf of citizens, employees, and elected officials hereby declare and sincere appreciation to Al Pearlman for the outstanding service to the Village of Evendale and accept my hand at this day. Let me.
I've had a shared privilege of having an active interest in government a long time. First presidential election, which I was aware of, was in second grade, and the school had a mock election, as schools still do. And a boy who wasn't in the seventh and eighth grade spoke on behalf of one candidate, and it was a pretty blonde girl that spoke on behalf of the other one. Naturally, I voted for the candidate supported by the verge of law. I've tried to be more serious in elections since then. When I was in college, my fraternity was Kansas headquarters for a candidate, and I voted every presidential election for it. One thing I will say, and it's a reiteration of my comments when I resigned from CIC, is that being here showed me how a government should really operate. CIC, or the Village of Evendale, is an affirmation of elected officials, employees of the village, and volunteers on various committees. And because of that, many of these things, all of these things that you read in which I was a participant, was really a collective mission. And that is why I think Evendale is a lot more successful. It might not be glamorous in some cities, but it's successful. It's an outstanding place to live, it's an outstanding place to do business, and I'm proud to have it in part.
More proud than having it, you have it in part. We have one guest for you.
What would it be?
I'll leave that to the chairman of the. Record targets, specifically for the Village of Evendale, particularly for people who retire and have been very long great employees of the Village of Evendale. So would that be an impact?
Thank you for this and the opportunity.
Do I have to interview your wife?
She's more modest than I am. Much if not the majority agree that it was highly successful.
Was she the pretty blonde in second grade?
There you go.
Was she Al?
I didn't read it before me.
Thank you, Al.
Thank you.
Don't forget Barbara.
Don't forget your wife.
Okay, now we'll get down to business. The first item on the agenda is, the minutes have been previously distributed. Is there any additions, corrections, or changes? I have a motion to approve.
Second?
Mr. Putoff?
Yes.
Mr. Sextrow?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Ms. Molly Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
All right, that is approved, and now the question is, or the, we will now have the committee reports, and I'll turn that over to the chairman of the committee, finance report.
Okay, on finance. Tax revenue receipts for October were 1.5 million, up over 150,000 from this time last year. Year-to-date receipts totaled 18 million plus, up almost 2.9 million from this time last year. Village-wide results, October expenditures exceeded revenue by just over 240,000. Get used to this, because it's probably going to happen, it's going to be a monthly trend for a while, because monthly negative trends are expected to continue as large capital expenditures come across our desk. These losses are planned. Year-to-date revenues exceed expenditures by 4.3 million. Couple ordinances coming up, and then on Gorman Heritage Farm. Sunflower Festival Farm Fun Days were a success. Over 6,000 attendees attended the both Farm Day weekend. Staffing, we are hiring a part-time livestock assistant to assist the animals in groundwork. Farm continues to be down, two full-time positions, ED role and Development Coordinator role, and they are working on those and think are fairly close to those. Gorman on the Go. Thanks to generosity of Elsa H., Sewell Foundation, and an honest donor, GHF, is not the proud owner of this new, or is now the proud owner of this new-to-use minivan to be used for educational outreach programs, including farm-to classrooms. Having a dedicated vehicle allows Gorman to continue to share and grow our farm-based educational programs. Ohio EPH Stream Restoration and Wetlands is continuing, I think they're on phase, I believe they're on phase two now. Gorman Heritage Farm Conservation and Legislature Tours, under the coordination of Hamilton County Conservative District, GHF, will host two tours in, or hosted two tours in September. First being fifty representatives from Ohio, Kentucky, and Indiana Conservation District. Farmed and farm meats, we have sold out of the pork and beef shares and plan to have a limited pork available for sale in the farm. This is a great feature and provide, to provide to our guests for those who do not have storage ability for the amounts of a whole or half share. Turkey's only a few remaining, this is actually as, and I don't know, this is as of the first of the month, few remaining turkey reservations for fresh turkeys. And dear, there was a huge issue for our row crops again this year. We use electric fencing and attempted to protect the crops, and Pete Fauci of Evendale Police Department secured a deprecation permit from ODNR and for a clean program to assist with reduction and pressure on the crops. Also Recreation Halloween Party was a success. Gingerbread Houses building, house building event is sold out. And Adam, were you able to get more take-home?
They're working on the waitlist now.
They're still working on the waitlist on the take-home gingerbread houses. Rake and Run was this past Saturday, 200 bags were collected, ten houses, and they had three people with backpack blowers and many rakers and manual labor to bag all 200 bags. Mr. Knight went through the programming and then meeting agreed importance of the community in connection. And let's see, I think that was it, so.
Okay, any discussion, questions? If not, we'll go to police and fire.
Okay. Wanted to start out by first mentioning that a question that had come up in our town hall meeting prompted a visit from one of our residents representing the group regarding some criminal activity that had been going on in the community and how to better communicate that. So we had a very extensive discussion. The chief offered the discussions that he'd had with the department and some residents, and his resident wanted to discuss, and I think an important thing to note is Call Multiplier, which we used to have, we no longer have as a way to communicate to the village, and that was because of low participation by residents in the village. So the end result of the discussion is Susan Sprawl was the person who came and spoke with the committee, and she's agreed to try to get together several people to work with the police department to try to figure out how we can best communicate to the community when activities are going on that residents should be made aware of. So that was the first part of our meeting. Also, from the police side, on the coyote management program, there is some funds available to purchase new rifle and thermal imaging to help address coyote management for this time of the year. Moving on to fire, the department, the committee working on purchasing of a new ambulance, as well as the chief, are working, still working on this process, and we should expect to get feedback after the first of the year, as far as the ambulance is concerned. So while I'm discussing vehicles, you will notice that we have an ordinance on the agenda again for the fire truck, and that's because we had requested a performance bond, and we were not satisfied that it protected the village's interests when we were investing that much money. So we are agreeing to pay on delivery versus paying in advance for the delivery of the truck. As such, the price is going to increase to almost 1.2 million to do that, but that's the best in discussions with the, both with the fire department and our chief financial officer and the committee, that's the best approach for us to take.
And we think we can recover that money in interest?
Yes, yes, because we have some funds available, as we discussed in the town meeting, that money that we collect now from EMS revenue is available to us, and we will be investing it. So we think we can recoup the difference between what we would have saved if we had continued with the contract that we had agreed to, I think it was in September that we did it. And also, on the, there's a new contract being negotiated with Med account management for EMS, EMS billing and ambulance services, but it's being revised because there is a new supplemental payment program, which involves Medicare, and these changes are estimated to increase EMS billing. Once this contract is finalized, it should increase our EMS billing by over $100,000. Moving on to cultural arts, let me first preface cultural arts with, there's so much going on, there's not a good way to represent all of it, so I will just give you highlights and suggest that you go to the cultural arts website to find out in detail about all the activities that are going on there. Let me first start with sparkling wine tasting, which is December 6th and 7th. There are still seats available, another session was added, that was under discussion at the committee meeting. So there's one session on Friday, December 6th, and there are still seats available. And there are two sessions on Saturday, December 7th, one at 4:00 PM and one at 6:00 PM. And as of this meeting, there's only one seat for the 6:00 PM, so if that's what you want, the sooner the better as far as registering there. Also, Mr. Jeffers and Ms. Gordy are looking at, are meeting with architects for the final walkthrough for the elevator, was that last week, or is it this? It's already been done, so I assume everything has been taken care of as far as walkthroughs are concerned. I'm getting yes nods for those who can't see. The cultural arts is looking for a new cello instructor, and on December 15th, the holiday market, featuring local artists and one-of-a-kind gifts, will be held on December 15th. And then, in the area of, where's my screen blank? Code enforcement, there were six cases this month that were closed, two of which went to mayor's court. One involved a residence and one involved building on the property of the former frisbee site. Both owners pleaded no contest to that, and so there's ongoing work to try to get those violations, you know, addressed. Also, there are a couple of businesses, one behind Menards that have been talking to the village. I don't have the details on that for you to share tonight, but things look promising there in terms of potential more jobs coming into the village on that. And that's our report.
Mayor, if I may, I actually.
Question?
I left out the service department, and I apologize. There is going to be an ordinance tonight for part-time hiring, and then Gorman Farm House remodeling will begin soon, and we can still have leaf bags for any of those who do still want leaf bags. The fire department generator has been delivered after a really long time, however, the service department generator has also been delivered, and that took probably one-third of the, one-fourth of the amount of time, if anything. Service department new building, steel, structure steel has been erected and in continued progress. Asphalt paving program is completed, line painting will finish when the wind dies down, and plans for the elevator will go out to bid shortly, as Carolyn just said. Meet with MSP Design for the 75th Annual, or Anniversary Project, potential island fountain between the fire department and the rec center. Angel Aerial Systems has moved into their space, to temporary space, Spartan Drive, where their place is renovated. Park Hill signage is in progress, and I think the concrete is poured on the west side, and they started working on the east side, and the island has been shorted, but it is open now for traffic. Ward to OKI grant for design to update traffic system, AD-20 grant of 1.6 million project, and then installing of permit signage for Arrow Hub is in progress.
Since we're doing dual reporting. So I think there were some things that I would have shared if I could see that. The property that I mentioned about a possible new business coming in is a new office building. I can share that. Also, the new Church of Christ on Glendale-Milford Road has a temporary certificate of occupancy and has begun holding services in the new building. The final certificate won't be issued until the old building is removed and landscaping and parking lots are complete. Building activity is strong, the department issued, building department issued 24 new permit applications, excuse me, received 24 new ones, issued 15 permits with an estimated construction cost of 6.8 million that generated a little over $11,000 in revenue. And this time, I'm finished.
Done. Okay. Any questions now, comments?
I do have a question, I'm not sure if now's the time to ask it, it's a procedural question.
Go ahead.
About the fire truck.
Yes.
Because last month, we passed an ordinance to buy the fire truck, so do we have to do something with that ordinance since we passed it to buy it, so now we just pass another one to buy it a different way? Would we just ignore that one?
Yeah, that gave the mayor authority to sign, but it doesn't require him to sign.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, I have a couple of things. We, within our group, we have discussed the town meeting, and some people, including myself, think that maybe some changes would be in order for the town meeting for next time around. A lot of discussion about that, and, well, after, maybe as we get closer to the next town meeting, we can put those in order. At the town meeting, there, we discussed Cooper Road again, and it was, we have discussed it more since the town meeting, and it's been, I think we've determined that we're going to do a traffic survey on Cooper Road to see if there's any possible things that can be done to alleviate people's concern about Cooper Road. We had stories of people with a flag in their hand trying to cross the street and somebody zipping by them, all kinds of stuff like that. So we're going to take that up, and we also talked about leaf pickup, and I'm pretty sure we have not, we're not going to start picking up leaves. It is counterproductive for us to do that in the Village of Evendale. We had discussed having a meeting, a meeting of the whole on the fire department, fire department renovation. I suggest we do that at the December pre-council meetings between the two, and like last month, we meet at four o'clock, then we'll have the discussion of the fire department, and then we'll follow with the other one, if that's okay with council.
So four, five, and six?
Yes. Okay? We'll get it done in one night, then. Couple other things, it's interesting, if you remember last time, a time before, I discussed the ICRC, and I had said that we were at some urging, they were now going to invest their excess monies, which was about $400,000. Since August, that has produced revenue to them of $600,000. So it's, I'm sorry, it's produced revenue of $5,000, potential of $600,000 for the year. So it's a significant increase, and they went with the STAR fund, which we also use as an investment cycle, so very successful. The, when I was in Columbus last week, I ran into the workers' compensation director, and I asked him, you know, how things were going, and he said, "Too well." I said, "What do you mean?" He said, "We are 100% actuarially sound, and we have a surplus of $8 billion in the fund." I said, "Well, let's declare a dividend and go free." And he said, "Well, we can't quite do that. The unions have brought up a good point, that they're afraid that if people, if employers do not have to pay into the fund for a year, or two, or three, they'll get slack on the safety side of the issue of workers' compensation." So he said, "We're looking for another avenue of how to do it," but they have $8 billion to keep in the, in the tail. Also, the council has, we've got the final word on the budget, I think, am I not, Ms. Grouchy? And had the chance to take a look at it today, and it looks like it's pretty good if we're ready to go on that. That's the extent of what I have, if anyone else has comments or questions, if...
Well, I've got, I've got a couple, Mayor. First of all, this is just a follow-up on some of the things that came up at the town meeting. First of all, a couple of thank-yous between Barbara Ross and Teresa Reader, and Dave Elmer, Adam Knight, James Jeffers, both chiefs. Thank you all for your help and participation. It was great seeing people back in the, in the building together. I was amazed that once all of us on this side of the day shut up, how much fun everybody else had enjoying dinner, so hopefully we'll be able to replicate that next year. I do want to follow up on a couple of questions that are still outstanding and expand just on two things. Ms. Molly Robertson talked about the conversation that's going on communication-wise. For those of you that are interested in how we communicate to you, and how we communicate to you particularly on a time-sensitive basis, please call up and either call Susan Sprawl if you know her, or call Dave Elmer, and he will direct you to Susan Sprawl. But this is, this is turning into be a bigger part, a bigger conversation, we invite all of you to get involved. Second piece, on the Cooper Road speeding thing, this is a, this is not a small thing, this is a big thing. If you had heard the people talk about what went on, there are, there is great concern that something is going to happen, and so we are looking at all kinds of options. that something i- is going to happen, and so we are looking at all kinds of options, but we're doing research first. So if you have, uh, if you have personal anecdotes or things, again, get involved, talk to your council member, let them know, this is something, we do not want something to happen on that end of the, on that end of the village. There was a quickie question on rec fees going up somehow, and just, Adam Knight will tell you, just to be clear, nothing's going up. We're, we're, we, that was two years ago, we haven't talked about it, it's not on the table, don't worry about it. Finally, there was a comment on sidewalks, and while sidewalks are not on the table, uh, what is, what is, is, we need to go back and look at the data that we collected 25 years ago, as part of, as part of why sidewalks were being considered. It's really a safety, it's a walking issue, it's a, um, uh, traffic issue. We're gonna be trying to put out a survey sometime in the early year, that just are gonna look at people's attitudes about, uh, where they walk, where they feel safe, where they think we have problems safety-wise, so that we have a better sense of what we're dealing with. Right now, things seem fine, we're not getting a lot of, of push for any, for anything in this area, but we wanna make sure that we use the opportunity to explore how people are thinking about it and what they really feel. So we're gonna be doing that in the, in the late part of the year and the early part of next year. Other than that, thanks to everybody who showed up, we had a great time, and if you've got suggestions, let us know.
Anybody else have comments? If not, we will go to the ordinance for the evening. The first one is ordinance 24-61, uh, I need a motion to read it by title only.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
An ordinance authorizing the payment of, of amounts due, that certain contracts requiring certification of availability of funds and declaring it as an emergency. This is our then-and-now ordinance, uh, I need a motion to suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Now I need a motion to adopt the emergency clause of the ordinance.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Now I need a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson?
Yes.
I now declare ordinance 24-61 adopted as an emergency. Next is our ordinance 24-62, I need a motion to read it by title only.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
An ordinance approve, approving an additional appropriation in the general fund and declaring it as an emergency, this is to cover some of the expenses of our proposed 70-50 anniversary project. I need a motion to suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Now I need a motion to adopt the emergency clause of the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Is that Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Pudoff?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson?
Yes.
Now I need a mo- need a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
McDaniel?
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Now to declare ordinance 24-62 adopted as an emergency. Next is ordinance 24-63, I need a motion to read it by title only.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Anthem to provide comprehensive health insurance to full-time village employees and declaring it as an emergency. Mr. Elmer, would you care to talk a little bit about this ordinance?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. Um, every year, the employee's, uh, major medical health insurance is due for renewal. Uh, this year, uh, as we did last year, we were able to secure a quote "no shop" bid from our, our current provider, Anthem, um, at a 5% rate increase from last year. To give you some context on that, had we gone out to bid, our broker, Hub Haran, had suggested that we'd likely see somewhere between 12 and 18% increase. So in front of you today is the exact same plan as we have this year renewed for next year, but at 5% increase.
And there's a dental plan included? Oh, that's the next ordinance?
Uh, dental is the next, i- is the next ordinance, yes.
Okay.
Two separate ordinances.
Well, you might as well go on that one and talk about it, and then we'll go to the ordinance.
Okay, so on the dental, uh, again, we did go out to, uh, we went out to bid for our dental, and we just received, uh, feedback from three different companies. Our current provider, Superior Dental Care, came back with a 19% increase. Uh, we saw, uh, bids that were higher than that, and one bid that was slightly lower than that. However, the lower bid, we would've lost approximately 40% of our, uh, dental providers had we gone with that plan. Therefore, our recommendation to the council is to renew with Superior Dental at 19%. That sounds high, but over the last, the past two years, there were 0% increases, and within the last 10 years aggregate, the sum total increase is only 1.73% increase. So we've been pretty successful in managing that, uh, that premium rate.
Any questions?
Mayor, I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank the, um, the Hert Committee, the Health Insurance Review Team, um, the, the employees involved in that. When, when we went to that committee years ago, it's been many years now, but, but when we created that committee with, with, uh, the help of our, our employees, they've done a tremendous job of researching and making sure that, that, you know, they understand the, the, the balance between taking care of our employees for these types of needs and, and the costs involved in doing that, and finding the best solution for both the employees and the village, and I wanna thank all of them for, for that.
I think Mr. Elmer deserves a little thanks, too, for keeping track of all this. It's no small task, no small task. All right, I need a motion to suspend the second and third, or the third, second and third reading of the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Now a motion to adopt the emergency clause of the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Miley Robertson?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Now a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
I now declare ordinance 24-63 adopted as an emergency. Next is ordinance 24-64, and I'd like permission to read it by title only.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Superior Dental Care to provide dental care benefits to the full-time village employees and declaring it as an emergency. I need a motion to suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson?
Yes.
Now I need a motion to adopt the emergency clause of the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Now a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Miley Robertson?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
I now declare ordinance 24-64 adopted as an emergency. Next, we have ordinance 24-65, I need permission to read it by title only.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Sutton for a fire engine and declaring it as an emergency. I think we've already discussed this pretty well, uh, so I need a motion to suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson?
Yes.
Now I need a motion to adopt the emergency clause of the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Now I might, need a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson?
Yes.
I now declare ordinance 24-65 adopted as an emergency. Next is ordinance 24-66, I need permission to read it by title only.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Miley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to hire a part-time employee in the service department and declaring it as an emergency. I need to, I need a motion to suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson?
Yes.
I need a motion to adopt the emergency clause of the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Miley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson? Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Now I need a motion to adopt the resolution as an emergency, no, the ordinance as an emergency.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson?
Yes.
Now declare ordinance 24-66 adopted as an emergency. No further business to come before council tonight, is there anything else from council? We will accept a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Council stands adjourned.